Alright guys, I guess everybody who wants to be in here is in here.
You gotta sign in and shoot for Shannon. We can wait until she comes back.
Alright guys, don't forget to sign in. Everybody that's here does need to sign in because we do have a few public hearings set tonight. So Shannon's gonna create a sign and shoot for everybody that's in here to sign. Please make sure you sign.
Jason, can you help us with that? This Shannon's got it right.
Alright, we're gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order at 6:00 PM. Bill Roll call vote, Laura Borlahe, Lee Carrington, Nate Brewer, Ashton Fowler. Our implication was provided by Councilman Brewer. Now we'll stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, on my nation, under God, indivisible, re宪治体，and justice for all.
Alright, you have a report for us tonight, there? How you doing?
Oh, not the report tonight, ma'am president.
Alright, I need to amend or adopt the agenda and Josh did, um, there is a new agenda Shannon or Heather made some copies. We did change the agenda that we added three items.
Motion to approve the agenda?
Second?
All in favor?
Yay.
Any nays? Alright, motion passes. Next item approved minutes of the regular city council meeting held on August 19th, 2025. Any motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yay.
Any nays? Motion passes. Next item approved minutes of the special call council meeting held on September 2nd, 2025. Any motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yay.
Any nays? Motion passes. Alright, so on to new business. Um, next item, there's a public hearing to consider whether the conditions at the property constitutes a public nuisance including in operable vehicles, abandoned and/or dilapidated structures, refuse or waste accumulation located at 305 East Fifth Street, Silicon Valley, Alabama, described further as parcel ID 2709294000025000. Alright, now I'm gonna, um... I'm just gonna read this the way it's written. It says, "Council President to announce speakers are limited to five minutes each, and groups presenting or supporting the same or similar options are limited to one representative per speaker. I now open the floor for, uh, public comments." And this is on the property located at 305 East Fifth Street. Alright, is there anyone here on that property? Alright, going once, going twice for 305 East Fifth Street. Alright, gonna close the, um... We're gonna close the public hearing. Alright. If to be considered at this meeting, I need an introduction by council member?
I'll introduce.
Alright, if to take action at this meeting, any motion by council member?
Yes.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yay.
Any nays? Alright, it was unanimous, so I- Alright, that was unanimous. I need a motion to approve resolution number 57-2025.
Motion.
Alright, let me say, "Action." Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yay.
Any nays? Alright, motion passes. Next item, public hearing to consider whether the conditions at the property constitutes a public nuisance including in operable vehicles, abandoned and/or dilapidated structures, refuse or waste accumulation located at 31 piny acres, Silicon Valley, described further as parcel ID 3403063000004000. Alright, I'm now gonna open the floor for, um, open up the public here for anyone who would like to make comments on this property. Remember you're limited to, um, five minutes. To speak. Alright, again, this is 31 piny acres. Is there anyone here? That would like to speak on this property? Alright, going once, going twice. We're gonna close the public hearing. Alright, so if to consider at, um, this meeting, I need, um, an introduction by council member for resolution 58-2025. Alright, if to be considered at this meeting, I need a motion by council member-
Motion.
-to suspend the rules.
Second.
All in favor?
Yay.
Any nays? It was unanimous. I need a motion by council member to, um, approve?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yay.
Any nays? Alright, motion passes. Next item, public hearing to consider whether the conditions at the property constitutes a public nuisance including in operable vehicles, abandoned or dilapidated structures, refuse and waste accumulation located at 217 West Third Street, Silicon Valley, Alabama, described further as parcel ID 2709293000059000. Alright, I'm now gonna, um, open the floor for the, um, for public comments. Remember, you're limited to five minutes. Of speaking time. Is there anyone here who would like to speak or say anything on behalf of 217 West Third Street? Alright, going once, going twice. Alright, we're gonna close the, um, floor for the public comments. Alright, if to consider at this meeting, I need a, um, council member to introduce resolution number 59-2025.
I'll introduce.
Alright. If to take action at this meeting, I need a motion to suspend the rules?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yay.
Any nays? Motion passes. It was unanimous. Now I need a motion to approve?
Motion.
I heard it. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yay.
Any nays? Alright, motion passes. Next item, public hearing to consider whether the conditions at the property constitutes a public nuisance including in operable vehicles, abandoned and/or dilapidated structures, refuse and waste accumulation located at 903 Prater Street, Silicon Valley, Alabama, described further as parcel ID 2709291001031000. I'll now open the floor for public comments. Remember, you're limit- limited to five minutes of speaking time. Is there anyone here who would like to speak on behalf of 903 Prater Street? So 903 Prater Street's going once, going twice. We're gonna close the floor for public comments. Alright. If to consider at this meeting, I need a council member to introduce resolution number 60-2025.
I'll introduce.
Alright. If action to be taken at this meeting, I need a, um, I need a motion to suspend the rules?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yay.
Any nays? Motion passes. Alright, so now that was unanimous. I need a motion to approve resolution number 60-2025.
Motion.
Any second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yay.
Any nays? Alright. Next item, public hearing to consider whether the conditions at the property constitutes a public nuisance including in operable vehicles, abandoned and/or dilapidated structures, refuse and waste accumulation located at 907, this one says the same, 907 Prater Street, Silicon Valley, Alabama, described further as parcel ID 2709291001029000. I'm now gonna open the floor for public comments. Remember, you're limited to five minutes of speak- of speaking time. Is there anyone here for 907 Prater Street? Alright, going once, going twice for 907 Prater Street. Alright, we're gonna close the floor for public comments. Alright, if to be considered at this meeting, I need an introduction by council member to consider 60, resolution 61-2025.
I'll introduce.
Alright, if to take action at this meeting, I need a motion to suspend the rules?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yay.
Any nays? If unanimous, I need a motion to approve?
Motion.
Any second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yay.
Any nays? Alright, motion passes. Next item, public hearing to consider whether the conditions at the property constitutes a public nuisance including in operable vehicles, abandoned and/or dilapidated structures, refuse or waste accumulation located at 404 South Main Avenue, Silicon Valley, Alabama, described further as parcel ID 2709324003006003. I'll now open the floor for public comments. Remember, you're limited to five minutes of speaking time.
Hello, I represent the seller in this. I'm the realtor. Uh, we do have offers on the table within the participants that are looking at it to purchase or to purchase all of his properties at once. Um, we're negotiating with, um, uh, contractors to find out how much it would cost to rehab all of his buildings at once. We do have two different offers on the table now. So if we can just get a little bit more time and then present you guys with, um, the plans to move forward to bring them back to life, um, and move forward with them.
Will you, um, and tell us which realty company that you represent?
Location.
Location?
Mm-hmm.
And your name?
Is Genevieve Wirt.
Will you spell it for me? I'm sorry.
G-E-N-E-V-E, last name Wirt, W-E-R-T.
How much time are you talking about?
Uh, we get, uh, well, about 30 days. I mean, they're really wanting, the, the people that wanna make the offers on the property really just want somebody saying that if they purchase the property, it's not gonna be torn down before they have a chance to do it. So really, I don't have a set time. I could say 30 days or 60 days. But really, I can't sell them. We've already had people back out and he's given one of the properties that's on the, the docket next away to a church because we don't have enough time and people aren't wanting to wait until I got in front of y'all today to see how long they have if they did purchase.
Okay.
Because they don't wanna purchase something that's gonna be torn down.
Okay, so I think, cause we've, you know, we've been spending a lot of time to get where we are. So, um, I think, and you guys should tell me if you disagree, I think we can give 30 days for you to come back to us because even if they buy it, we're still gonna need a plan. Cause we don't want somebody else to buy it and then the property just still sits dilapidated.
So if, if they purchase and they have a plan, you'll extend it for them to fini- be able to finish it with the contractor?
And there needs to be a timeline and we will-
Yeah, as soon as I get something from y'all saying they have a, you know, a certain amount of time to bring you plans and then you won't care down at that point, then I, I, I'm sure that we can get them sold in the next week.
Okay, but there will, there has to be a plan and a timeline. They will have to stick to that timeline. Josh, do you?
Cause I think one buyer already has a general contractor with the plan, with the plans already grown up and the amount of money it's gonna take to fix all of them.
Okay.
And I have a document that we can have them sign with timeframes, um, that are allowable to y'all.
So you good with this, Josh?
Uh, yes.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak on behalf of this property?
So can we, you're basically saying we need to, can you go off of our verbal agreement saying you have 30 days? Would that be enough to-
I probably not satisfy buyers because they're, they're-
That's the form we're talking about?
I don't have it in my hand, but like-
You'll have something to give to her that she can give to her client showing that there's verbal agreement?
I'm sorry, we'll be able to give her the minutes of the meeting showing where you said that you were giving her time.
And it has to be the owner that comes back in and asks for it.
That's right.
It can't be the real estate agent.
Yeah, the owner now, the seller now lives three hours away and he's, he's older and, right, he has a hard time getting down here.
Okay, so you'll just, you can get the minutes of the meeting when they're finalized and that'll show the 30-day agreements and that should satisfy your point.
What's the timeline of her to return that form what she gave to her, Josh?
Uh, we fill out what we want it to be as far as if you wanna give them 45 days or-
I think that's what we did in the last, cause I think it was 45 days. And so, okay, alright, well that sounds fair.
Because if you determine that it is a nuisance, um, we have a max of 180 days to take action, total. Uh, so if they are not falling within those timeframes that we, um, agreed to give them, then our time won't, uh, will start as soon as they don't fall through.
Hey, can we go ahead and have that on record that it's just not for the 404, it's also for the 310, cause he's deeded the 310 to a church. The church is here.
We have to wait until the next one. We have to, it's like, it's separate.
Yeah, we'll go one by one.
What'd you say, Josh?
One at a time.
It's 45 according to Josh.
So we had to do 45.
Alright, so we're not gonna, um, taking an action on this?
Do you wanna do 30?
She said 30, I was thinking 30.
I can have it for the next town meeting.
Great.
That's on September the 16th. But remember, listen, remember what, um, she said. So the owner has to come in and request it. So you'll be prepared to do that on the 16th?
In two weeks. Can you have it solved within two weeks?
Um, I don't know if we'll be at closing for two weeks. We're closing because we have full title and all that kinda stuff, so I don't wanna, I don't wanna say. I think I can have a contract, but I, we're not gonna be closed out for-
Let's just do the, the first meeting in October, Josh.
No later than that, you could get it early. You can ask for it.
Alright.
I'll drop.
Okay. Alright. Is there anyone else who would, um... Is there anyone else who has some comments for the property located at 404 South Main Avenue? So it's going once, going twice. Alright, we're gonna close the, um, public comments. And then we're not gonna take any action on this one, right? So everybody who wanted to say something, say something. So Mr. Smith next? Alright?
I'm not sure about that. Uh, generally, it's still considered a nuisance for me to take action and they have a, then we agreed to have a timeframe to do it within.
Yeah, you're right, Josh.
Remember the last one?
Yeah, you're right.
I just reworded the resolution. I didn't worry at the bottom. It gives them 30 days.
Okay, so if to consider at this meeting, I need a council member to introduce resolution 62-2025.
I'll introduce.
Alright. If to take action at this meeting, I need a, um, motion to suspend the rules?
I'll make the motion. We suspend the rules.
Any second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yay.
Alright, any nays? Alright. So if I say this wrong, y'all just correct me, okay? So since it was unanimous, I need a motion by a council member to still declare this property as a nuisance, but we're gonna give the property owner 30 days to come back with a plan as to rehab this term property located at 404 South Main Avenue.
For selling purposes. I'll make a motion. Second.
All in favor?
Yay.
Any nays? Alright, motion passes. And Shannon, you, um, put that in yours, right? You wrote that. Okay. Alright, thanks, Josh. Alright, next item, um, is public hearing to consider whether the conditions at the property constitutes a public nuisance including in operable vehicles, abandoned and/or dilapidated structures, refuse and waste accumulation located at 310 South Main Avenue, Silicon Valley, Alabama, described further as parcel ID 2709294000025000. Alright, I'm now gonna open the floor for public comments. Remember, you're, um, limited to five minutes of speaking time.
You do have the new owner here. Um, he's, he's a little bit hard hearing.
Oh, so is he the owner for both of them?
No, he is the owner for, the, the seller, the, the owner of the property now, indeed, well, indebted him the property.
Uh-huh.
Um, it hasn't gone through the court system yet, but he's going to be the new owner. And he, he does have a team, a general contractor that's gonna come in and drop your plans, um, already on hand. So we talked to him this afternoon, so it's all in the works of getting his bid on how to rehab that. And he is aware from talking to me and talking to the, um, the original owner that, um, there's firewalls that have to be done. And he, he understands the, the magnitude of what needs to be.
Okay.
He's, the church is willing to do that.
And is he prepared to have his plan by the first meeting in October as well?
Yes, I will.
What, what is, what is it, the first, what is our first meeting?
I think yours is.
The 7th?
October 7th.
Okay, thank you.
Alright. Alright, is that it? That's all you guys have to say about this? Okay, so is there anyone else who would like to speak on behalf of 310 South Main Avenue? We're gonna go ahead and close the, um, public hearing. Alright, if to consider at this meeting, I need a, um, motion by a council member to introduce resolution number 63-2025.
I'll introduce.
Alright, if to take action at this meeting, I need a motion to suspend the rules?
Motion.
I heard Lee. Any second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yay.
Any nays? Okay. If unanimous, y'all correct me if I'm wrong, I need a motion to declare the property located at 310 South Main Avenue a nuisance, but we're allowing the owner 30 days to bring us the plan of rehabbing, um, rehab, rehabbing the property. I need a motion, um, by council member?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Alright, Laura. Shannon, just make sure both of those have the same word.
Yep, same one.
All in favor?
Yay.
Any nays? Alright, motion passes. Next item, public hearing to consider whether the conditions at the property constitutes a public nuisance including in operable vehicles, abandoned and/or dilapidated structures, refuge and waste accumulation located at 1007 North Main Avenue, Silicon Valley, described further as parcel ID 2709291004010000. I'm now gonna open the floor up for public comments. Remember, you're limited to five minutes of speaking time. Is there anyone here who would like to, um, speak on behalf of 1007 North Main Avenue? Going once?
Alright, we'd, they'd made, the best one they'd made improved. So we need, we need to be careful what we're gonna do here. So we got new, they put new windows in, there's new columns.
Who's in the red? I know, but who's?
Pull it up, pull it up.
Nobody's here though. Somebody should've came to, like, defend that, right? Yeah, I mean, we still have to go, we still have to do what we gotta do. Somebody, that's why they were supposed to stand. They were notified.
Right, Josh?
Right.
Okay. Alright, so I'm gonna go ahead and close the floor for public comments. Alright, if to consider at this meeting, I need a council member to introduce resolution number 64-2025.
I'll introduce.
Alright, if to take action at this meeting, I need a motion to suspend the rules?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yay.
Any nays? Motion passes. Alright, it was unanimous. I need a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yay.
Any nays? Motion passes. Next item, public hearing to consider whether the conditions at the property constitutes a public nuisance including in operable vehicles, abandoned and/or dilapidated structures, refuge and waste accumulation located at 408 East Sixth Street, Silicon Valley, Alabama, described further as parcel ID 2709291023008000. I'm now gonna open the floor up for, um, public comments. Remember, you're limited to five minutes of speaking time. Is there anyone here who would like to address the property located at 408 East Sixth Street? Going once, going twice. We're gonna go ahead and close the floor for public comment. If to consider at this meeting, I need a council member to introduce resolutions 65-2025.
I'll introduce.
If to take action at this meeting, I need a motion to suspend the rules?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yay.
Any nays? It was unanimous. I need a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yay.
Any nays? Next item on the agenda, public hearing to consider whether the conditions at the property constitutes a public nuisance including in operable vehicles, abandoned and/or dilapidated structures, refuge and waste accumulation located at 78 Cleveland Avenue, Silicon Valley, described further as parcel ID 2709314004081000. I'm now gonna open the floor for public comments. Remember, you're limited to five minutes of speaking time.
I have a question. The picture says 76 Cleveland Avenue, but the agenda says 78. Is it, it's like a little on there or?
76 like on here.
It's 78 on the agenda. I'm gonna look at the resolution. I just wanna make sure.
Yeah, we need to make sure. Josh, do you know which one is the correct one?
Which one are we talking about?
Oh, um, 78 Cleveland Avenue. So is it 78 or 76? The picture says 76.
The agenda says 78.
It should be what?
No, we're asking, is it 76 or 78? The picture says 76. The resolution says 78.
And we're right now on 506 North Level?
No, we're on 78 Cleveland Avenue.
Just a second. 78.
Alright, so the resolution is correct?
I just wanna be sure before we move forward.
Second? I'm now gonna open the floor for public comments. Remember, you're limited to five minutes of speaking time. Alright, is there anyone here who would like to speak on behalf of 78 Cleveland Avenue? Going once, going twice. We're gonna close the floor for public comments. Alright, if to be considered at this meeting, I need a council member to introduce resolution number 66-2025.
I'll introduce.
Alright, if to take action at this meeting, I need a motion by a council member to suspend the rules?
Motion.
Any second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yay.
Any nays? Alright, it was unanimous, so I need a motion by a council member to approve?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yay.
Any nays? Next item, public hearing to consider whether the conditions at the property constitutes a public nuisance including in operable vehicles, abandoned and/or dilapidated structures, refuge and waste accumulation located at 417 Allen Drive, Silicon Valley, described further as parcel ID 270931401017000. I'm gonna now open the floor for public comments. Remember, you're limited to five minutes of speaking time. Is there anyone here who would like to address the property located at 417 Allen Drive? So 417 Allen Drive is going once, going twice. We're gonna close the, um, close the public comments. If to consider at this meeting, I need an introduction by a council member for resolution number 67-2025.
I'll introduce.
Alright, if to take action at this meeting, I need a motion by a council member to suspend the rules?
Motion.
Alright, Lee. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yay.
Any nays? Alright. If unanimous, I need a motion by a council member to approve?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yay.
Any nays? Motion passes. Next item, public hearing to consider whether the conditions at the property constitutes a public nuisance including in operable vehicles, abandoned and/or dilapidated structures, refuge and waste accumulation located at 100 East Eighth Street, Silicon Valley, described further as parcel ID 2709291017005000. I'm now gonna open the floor for public comments. Remember, you're limited to five minutes of speaking time.
I'm Ricky Dixon. I'm representing the 100 East Eighth Street property, uh, owned by Ben Dixon, Benjamin Dixon. Uh, there's a lot of cleanup has already been done. All vehicles have been moved and, uh, the old porch is clean, the, the whole front is clean. Josh went by there, I think, today or yesterday?
Yesterday, I took a photo.
And, uh, you mind if I take a photo?
Yeah.
I'll take a photo too, but I- I've taken photos too, but, uh, back to side yard, you got the front?
I took both photos, left side and right side.
Hey, just showing one photo. Okay, so, uh, our plan is to, uh, finish cleaning, uh, on, uh, September the eleventh. I have, uh, contacted D and T Rental, that's, uh, the rent Bobcat and Skid steer, uh, and GFI is gonna deliver the thirty-yard roll-off that day also, and we'll be working on, uh, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, uh, to clean up the rest of the, uh, debris and anything else around the sides of the back and out in the woods. So our question is, of the buildings that are there, uh, you know, if we can save any of the buildings by having it, uh, inspected by Chris White, an inspector from, uh, greatest place in here. I don't know if you know Chris White or not, but he's, he works for an inspection company, home inspection company. Uh, he inspects, he inspected my office, he, he does a lot of work sometimes.
Josh, what are you recommending on this one? Cause is this the one that, the stuff was moved from the front to the back?
Yes, ma'am, so, uh, the, uh, some, the nuisance with this has nothing to do with the actual house. Uh, the big white house, one-hundred East Eighth. Uh, we never have done any inspections inside the house. Uh, Benji lives inside the house, and, uh, I have only been focused on the parcel of land from the, the sidewalk, straight back. And that act, that land parcel actually goes from eighth to ninth, um, that one straight parcel. And so, um, as far as the mention about, uh, the nuisance of all the junk on the property, that's, that's what we were focused on, and not the house itself.
That's right, and as a representative for that district, Mr. Deason, as you know, you know, when we go through this periodically, uh, every six, every eight months, we get it cleaned up, and then next thing you know, everything's right in the back of the front yard. And you know, we have a lot of people that come down that road, we have, football season is in, we have a lot of people that sit at Legion Stadium and they look over there.
Well, I see what you're saying, but I want to watch a ballgame.
Yeah, well, I understand that, but, but yeah, but when they go running in, Mr. Benji.
Say what property they can see?
Mr. Benji, when you're sitting there and looking at the north end zone, that's what you see, and it looks bad. It's terrible, okay? Number two, council, now y'all do what you wanna do. As a representative for that district, we have been through this with this property before. I make a motion that we move on and we help get that cleaned up, and we get all the junk and all the debris and everything gone. Now, the house is fine, Benji lives in the house, he's been there a long time. I get it, but I don't want that going back to the front yard. I mean, he's got turf there that comes from the dumps to the old turf, and that's fine, it looks neat if that's what Benji wants to do, but guys, I don't want it junked up again, and we have to revisit this in the next six to seven months. Now, that's my personal opinion.
It's not gonna be junked up again, I promise you that. He does not have a vehicle, so he cannot go out and ride around when people putting their stuff out there, for the city to pick up, that he haven't picked up, he's got a bad habit of doing that. A lot of people do that stuff, sell it, and he sells some of that stuff. He does not have a job, he does not have any income. So if you hire a contractor, like you did before on the other land, it costs twenty-five thousand dollars for a day and a half of work.
Well worth it.
No, it was not.
Well worth it.
Mr. Deason?
We'll do that next week, but he cannot pay you that, and you want to take his property away? We can clean that property up. I know how to run a skid steer, I've done it for years. I ca, I know how to call GFI, I got the stuff right here.
So, Mr. Deason, that's what I was gonna ask you, so you have, you said on September the eleventh, you're gonna have a roll-away dumpster?
Yes.
Um, and what, and you're gonna clean this stuff up that you guys moved to the back? You're gonna remove all that stuff?
We're gonna put it in a dumpster, they're gonna haul it off, yes, ma'am.
Alright, so I think, so Josh, just correct me if I'm wrong, so we're still gonna have to declare this as a nuisance, but if he get it cleans up, then we won't do anything to it, right?
That's what we did last night.
Okay.
There's phone numbers, there's contract, GFI, uh, didn't get a contract with, uh, uh, the other person, but there's, there's a phone number, you can call him and you'll verify that. I'm going to, they're gonna deliver the Bobcat on nine-eleven on Thursday morning, and we will start working on Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and get the property cleaned up.
So if I'm correct, Mr. Deason, we have, once we do this, we, if I'm correct, and Josh, you correct me if I'm wrong, once we approve this and declare that property as a nuisance, we have up to a hundred and eighty days to do something, but if he cleans it up before then, then we won't do anything, correct?
Correct.
Okay, alright, so it will be declared a nuisance, Mr. Deason, but if you go and do what you say you're gonna do and get it cleaned up, then there won't be any action on the city side.
Okay, I will clean it up, we will clean it up. Benji's been working cleaning it up, and you can see, he's made a big improvement on the front.
And I understand, it's just the-
It speaks for itself, and he's made a big improvement there. And, uh, I want it cleaned up just as bad as you do, Mr. Brewer, I do. I don't want people seeing all that.
I understand.
My, my grandson goes to Silicaca High School.
Yes.
And, uh, frankly, he's been embarrassed about it.
I understand.
We all are, but, you know, uh, there's lots of other properties right close by that are just as bad as his, and you're not saying anything about them. And I don't see, I don't hear one of the lists. Right over here by the swimming pool, there's a house right there.
We have-
Been there for years and years and years.
Yes, sir, Mr. Deason, so we, we are gonna go ahead and declare the nuisance, and as long as you do what you say you're gonna do and get it cleaned up, then there won't be any action on the city. But you do have a hundred and eighty days before the city takes action, okay?
Okay.
Alright, so I, I have to-
What I would like to say is, if before you do any action, would you please contact me? Because you did not contact me about the other property that we cleaned up.
So when it comes down to the date, we don't, uh, it's not gonna be a hundred and eighty days, that's how much time we have. So if we're gonna sign a contract for, uh, Ricky and Benji to finish the project, uh, so you're saying, uh, September eleventh, right?
September eleventh?
So are we talking forty-five days?
It's just forty-five days.
Forty-five days, we'll do the, the contract with them, and then, once that forty-five days is over, if it's clean, we're done. If it's not, then, then that's when our time period starts.
Okay, but we're still gonna go, we're still gonna do all these action items, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Alright, okay.
Forty-five days from what date?
When they sign this tonight.
Okay, from the night.
Thank you, Mr. Deason.
Alright, thank you.
And so that's your notification.
Okay, so there's no written notification?
I'm gonna give you, I'm gonna follow up with you with that piece of paper.
Okay.
With what they said.
So if to consider at this meeting, I need a council member to introduce Resolution sixty-eight dash twenty-two-five.
I'll introduce.
Alright, if to take action at this meeting, I need a motion to suspend the rules.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yay.
Yay.
Any nays? Uh, motion passes. Alright, it was unanimous, I need a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yay.
Any nays? Motion passes. Next item, public hearing to consider whether the conditions at this property constitute a public nuisance, including inoperable vehicles, abandoned and/or dilapidated structures, refuge and waste accumulation located at five-oh-six North Louisville Avenue, Silicaca, Alabama, described further as parcel ID two-seven-oh-nine-two-nine-one-zero-two-four-oh-oh-three-oh-oh-two. I'm now gonna open the floor for public comments. Remember, you're limited to five minutes of speaking time. Is there anyone here who would like to address five-oh-six North Louisville Avenue? So, five-oh-six North Louisville Avenue is going once, going twice. I'm gonna close the, um, floor for public comment. If to consider at this meeting, I need a council member to introduce Resolution Number sixty-nine dash twenty-two-five.
I'll introduce.
If to take action at this meeting, I need a motion to suspend the rules.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yay.
Any nays? Motion passes, well, we're gonna suspend the rules. It was unanimous, I need a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yay.
Any nays? Motion passes. Next item, action that is necessary to authorize the mayor to sign an agreement was sentenced for uniform rental and door max. No change in the rates. I need a motion by a council member?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yay.
Any nays? Motion passes. Next item, action that is necessary to authorize the mayor to sign an agreement with Jacksonville State University to provide, to provide forensic time services and education for the Silicaca Police Department.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yay.
Any nays? Alright, motion passes. Next item, action that is necessary to approve, uh, MOU between the Silicaca Police K-9 and the Silicaca Board of Education for ten one-half-day inspections. Need a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yay.
Any nays? Motion passes. Next item, action that is necessary to approve MOU between the Silicaca Police Department and the Silicaca Board of Education to share the cost of two SRO officers? Do we need to put the cost in here? Shannon, do you have that dollar?
I don't know what cost in there yet.
Okay. Alright, so pending cost. Need a motion by council member?
Motion.
Second? All in favor?
Yay.
Any nays? Motion passes. Next item, action that is necessary to approve rescue, approved request from Costa Valley Rescue Squad to use remaining appropriations for the purchase of a UTV to replace the current gator. We, we do need a, put us a dollar amount.
Twenty-three, nine.
On the quote.
I told him I would.
We don't need the quote, cause we're not paying for the whole quote, we just need the-
I will-
I told him I would have the exact amount for it.
Alright. I need a motion by a council member?
We do not exceed twenty-four.
Yeah, well, we, cause we only allocated so much money, they're spending the rest, so.
Ours was whatever the balance is, which is twenty-ish, wasn't it?
Yeah. I need a motion by a council member?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yay.
Any nays? Motion passes. Alright, next item, action that is necessary to approve fiscal year twenty-two-five accounts payable in the amounts of nine-hundred, nine-hundred-twenty-thousand-two-hundred-seventy-three dollars and sixty-three cents. Need a motion by a council member? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yay.
Any nays? Motion passes. Alright, next item, action that is necessary to send a public hearing to receive public input on ordinance number twenty-two eighty-six dash twenty-five, flood, plane development ordinance. I need a motion by a council member?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yay.
Any nays? Motion passes. Next item, action that is necessary to approve Resolution Number seventy-two dash twenty-two-five to send a public hearing for the rezoning of one-on-one East First Street from DTV to MX dash two for the purpose of residential use on October seventh, twenty-two-five at six P M. I need a motion?
Motion.
Alright, Nate?
Second.
All in favor?
Yay.
Any nays? Motion passes. Next item, action that is necessary to approve payment in the amount of one-hundred-twenty-six-thousand-two-hundred-eighty-nine dollars and nine cents to the Mes- Mesotech International for the purpose of replacing the AWOS system at the Merkel Field, Silicaca, Minnesota Airport from City Improvement Fund.
Motion. Motion.
Huh?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yay.
Any nays? Alright, next item, action that is necessary to approve Resolution seventy-one dash twenty-two-five rescinding raises that were given without council approval and repayment of all funds associated within in the same way it was paid. Need a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Has we looked over this?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so you approved of that win, the resolution?
I approved of it.
Right, do you? No, but I mean, did you, you know, start setting yourself for litigation?
In the resolution.
You haven't seen the resolution?
I mean, I saw the resolution, I understand the problem.
Okay.
Mayor, are you planning on asking for Shannon, since she's doing an interim job, to get her five percent, so she's not looked without, since she's taking on additional responsibilities?
Over the question, five percent, we stand operation cease for all interim positions throughout the, all the years I've been here.
Do you plan on asking us to go on the agenda?
Does it have to go on the agenda?
Yeah. Yes, sir.
If you go and demand it, then I'll go on the agenda.
Thank you. So, how will this work if he adds back to the next agenda?
She'll, if, if approved, because keep in mind, it's a consideration, it's just to be considered, it's not promised, but if it's considered, it will be paid starting the day we consider. You know, we don't do retroactive payments. But I need to finish, let me finish this one. I need a motion by a council member to approve this resolution?
Motion.
Second, and Nate was the second, okay, so all in favor?
Yay.
Any nays? Motion passes. Next item, action that is necessary to approve the use of the old food world parking lot by Kelly Payton for staging the horses and hounds parade on October eighteen, twenty-two-five. Need a motion by a council member?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yay.
Any nays? Motion passes. But Laura, back to what you were saying, I didn't wanna get confused, he can request it, and it even says in the letter from the Chief of Exameras Office, he has to request it, we have to approve all money. It even tells him in the letter that he received in the Chief Exameras Office.
When we put Nicole Brown in, we retroactively paid her, and I brought that up about retroactive pay in January when we retroactively paid her.
We'll have to pull the minutes, cause I, I can't remember what happened then, but I do know we don't, we don't do retroactive pay. But any money that's approved, raises, no matter what it is, even if somebody wants to buy something, if somebody wants to change a line item in their budget, whatever it is, all money has to come through the council.
Right.
We have to approve it. Alright, so now it's time for anyone to address the council. No action will be taken at this meeting, please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record prior to addressing the council. You will have five minutes of speaking time.
Hi, my name is Greer Visagnani, I'm at twenty-four twenty-two Lake Terrace Road, Silicaca, Alabama. I'd like to know where you are on the, um, proposal for the purchase of two and a, two and a half acres by a gentleman at Lake Louise. He made a, a option, he asked the city to sell this property that is not on the record as being on sale. And so I'd like to know where you guys are on that, um, decision. I haven't heard anything about that in the last couple of weeks.
Alright, so Greer, just make sure you leave all of your contact information, remember, no action will be taken dur, during this time, and we'll, the mayor can get back to you with an answer.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the council? Alright, remember, no action will be taken, and you have five minutes of speaking time.
I'm Sheriff Mickey, I live at twenty-ninth First Street. And I was trying to see if you got, uh, my question is for the mayor, if you got any information on any questions I asked you at the last meeting?
No, I haven't, the Intro Mall, Superintendent of the Streets Department has not verified anything.
Okay, so will you have it at the next meeting?
Pardon?
Will you have the information at the next meeting?
Well, if he hasn't gotten in complacent with the issues with it, he hasn't brought it to my attention.
Okay, so, at the next, okay, so basically, this tax-
I've been out there, I haven't seen a child, I don't know.
Okay.
But I, uh, been back there since the clerk's office, been back through the other way,
But I, uh, been back there to the clerk's office, been back through the other way, uh, with the men and the working areas. But I haven't seen a child out there.
So nobody knows anything?
I don't know.
Okay.
And the superintendent's, uh, pastor, the superintendent, the president superintendent hasn't complained to me about it, about this issue, or if there even is an issue. Where do you get your information from?
So did you ask any of the workers?
No, I haven't questioned the workers.
Right, cause I'm, my testimony is because I'm tax paid. It's taxpayers' money. And then if, if the child gets hurt on the property, then it's a lawsuit that gets proceeded, which is more money for the taxpayer.
I'd be worried about, uh, my building issues. Anyway, it's, uh, I haven't seen him personally and nobody out there has brought it to my attention.
Okay.
So I don't know what's going on at that, at this point.
Okay.
Alright, that's it, Sharon.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the council? Alright, having no further business to discuss, I need a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
My name is Kerry Clisbee, forty Wood Street, Silicaca, Alabama. And I'd like to address the council on the rezoning of, uh, District Two. And that many of the citizens, citizens in District Two, the part that was rezoned, I think it was put over in District Four. They didn't know it. Who made the decisions to rezonate? And should the citizen have the opportunity to vote on whether or not they may want to be rezoned?
We all attended a meeting further rezoning. And we didn't know the final thing until I think it came in front of us and then we actually had to accept it. And it was something that had to have been done.
East Alabama.
It was a state level, um, requirement and what, what happened was the districts, like my, my district one had somewhat of probably three hundred more members, voting members, whatever it was, uh, more than other districts. So it wasn't fair across the board, not to say it's gonna be exact, but they want each district to be within twenty-five to fifty members of each other. So what they had to do was take from one and give to another to make each of us, each district, a little bit more closer in population. And on top of that, what makes it even harder is he sits down, the, the gentleman came and, and showed us this. You can't pick house to house, person to person. It's voting blocks. It comes in blocks. So it may be four houses in one block. It may be one house, but it comes in several, uh, usually several houses in one voting block. It gets picked and moved from one district to another. So we know we couldn't really pick it per se. We might, might have had, we obviously didn't, you couldn't do it in the middle of the district. We wanted to do it on the outlines where you could just move it where two districts met and move it from one to the other. And that was, tried to do it the easiest way, but it was a, a hard process to go through when you're dealing with that much, give and take.
So, so what he's saying is it wasn't our decision and clearly they didn't ask the citizens. And when, um, I know I had some of the people that were removed from my district that went to District Four, they contacted East Alabama and they told them that they sent letters out, but conveniently nobody received any, nobody received any letters.
It was a cluster. A lot of people did not receive letters in any district. I know in my district, people did not receive letters.
Yeah, so nobody received anything. So we do apologize for that, but we thought that there was gonna be some communication that went out and then they're still saying they sent letters out, but we don't know where the letters went.
Okay, so it was a state decision?
Yes, sir.
Alright, well, is there a way that we could get a map of the redistrict?
It should be, it should be available.
The map's on the city website. And you can get a paper copy?
It's like fifteen dollars, man.
I don't even know if I even left.
How much is it?
About fifteen dollars.
I don't need.
But it's on the city website.
So is there anyone else who would like to address the council? Having no further business to discuss, I need a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yea.
Alright, any nays? Time of adjournment, six fifty-three.